Stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everyone for attending tonight's Bryan City Council meeting of August the fifteenth. And so first thing we have on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the August first, regular council meeting, and August the third, special executive meeting. Council, you've been presented with those minutes. As you can see, is there any, at this point, any corrections, additions need to be made at this time?
Hearing none from anybody else, I move that we accept both as read, as given to us.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. And next we have a clerk's treasure report. So Lori, would you please give that to us?
The council's been presented with the clerk treasures report for the month ending July 31st, 2016.
I move that we accept.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Next, we have hearing of public concerns. That is the time to address council if you're not on the agenda. And it's my understanding we have one person. Please come forward and state your name.
Hi guys. Max Reinhardt. I'm here not on behalf of the paper tonight, just as a Bryan resident. Wanted to quickly ask a question in regards to issue number six tonight on the agenda. Would I understand correctly that would ban sale and manufacture of medical marijuana in Bryan? Is that more or less correct?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure I was right before I get on my spiel here. As I understand it, the city has no laws banning sale, manufacture of opiates. Medical marijuana, a much safer alternative to that kind of drug, according to a Harris poll. That's not a biased poll. That's not a left-leaning, normal group or something. Eighty-one percent of Americans favor legalization of medical marijuana. I think this law, as I understand, I don't know all the ins and outs, I think it'd be maybe a little counterproductive, possibly short-sighted. You know, here in Bryan, we got a new industrial park. We got storefronts that I'm sure we want to fill. We want to bring jobs in. And you'd be shutting the door on a whole new industry, shutting the door on new jobs, shutting the door on people that could benefit from this medicine, having potential, you know, closer access to it. Save them a trip to Toledo, or wherever else might be the closest place where they could obtain this. As far as I can see it, the only reason you would have to pass this law would be to further stigmatize medical marijuana. And I'm not, you know, we're not talking about recreational use. We're talking about a medicine here. That again, eighty-one percent of Americans, and I assume your constituents make up a pretty good slice of that pie as well. I think if you do research, talk to residents, you might, you know, might see more people sharing the same opinion than I'm expressing tonight. I hope you'll do that before you make a decision tonight. You know, and I'm certainly not saying you gotta let everyone come in. And I'm sure the city has rules where, you know, you could vet these things on a case-by-case basis. I think that'd probably be the way to go, my personal opinion. You know, that way, business comes in. You can look at the specifics of that case and kind of make a decision there. You know, I'm not talking about putting a head shop on every corner in Bryan. Certainly, you know, we don't want to see that. But to just throw a blanket on it and say, you know, "We don't want you to produce this medicine here," to me, that's not the way to go. And thank you very much, and hope you'll think this through.
Thank you. All right. Number four, we have an ordinance. And so Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number thirty-three, 2016. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one for the project known as Fountain Grove Drive Rehabilitation, proceeding purposes only.
Andy Guaderson is going to address this ordinance?
Everything out there is running on schedule. We just wanted to give the contractor extra time to seed. Obviously, seed in September, we're gonna get better result than if we do it right now, so.
I move to accept.
Is this suspended?
I will second to suspend.
Suspend the ordinance.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. And number five is an ordinance as well. So Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number thirty-four, 2016. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one for the project known as 2016 Curb Replacement Program, proceeding purposes only.
Again, same thing. Projects are running on schedule. Just want to give the contractor extra time to seed.
I move that we suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty. Number six is an ordinance. So Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number thirty-five, 2016. An ordinance revising the Bryan, excuse me. An ordinance revising the City of Bryan codified ordinance section 1103.02 concerning uses and definitions to prohibit the cultivation, processing, and retail dispensing of marijuana for the purpose of medical use in all zoning districts of the City of Bryan, and declaring an emergency.
Rhonda, would you want to address that, please?
Please. The reason that I have brought this forward to you tonight is because the law was signed into effect, I'm sorry, it was signed on June ninth and goes into effect on September ninth. And therefore, if your city is going to take any action regarding this bill, you must do it before that date. So starting with that, that's why it's being brought to you now. The reason that I have brought it to you is because through the passage of this law, there are numerous regulations that have to be put into place to determine who, what, when, where, and how marijuana is going to be developed for cultivation and retail purposes under the new medical marijuana law. This has not been done at this point, and so we have no way of knowing how it's going to be dispensed, who can cultivate it, how it has to be cultivated. The law does tell us that there are only certain ways that the marijuana is going to be allowed to be legal for medical purposes, such as the smoking or combustion of marijuana for medical marijuana purpose is not permitted under the law. So for those of you who think you're going to be able to smoke marijuana for medical purposes, that is prohibited under the law. There are also specific concentrations of the THC, which is allowed in the marijuana for it to be designated for medical marijuana purposes. But for the dispensing, the cultivation, and the retail sales, the regulations have not been created. And so because we are in a quandary of what's going to be happening, we need to have some moratorium on this within our jurisdiction until those things are decided. And as my research assistant, the mayor, has uncovered, we are also concerned about the constitutionality of this bill to begin with because of this decision just came out that the Federal Drug Enforcement Administration on Thursday declined to reclassify marijuana from a substance that is dangerous without beneficial value, thus not allowing it for medical purposes despite Ohio and twenty-four other states. So there are still too many questions for us to be able to handle this issue locally. And that's why I'm asking for passage of this until such time as those regulations are in place. And this law has been reviewed.
Okay. My personal opinion, it makes sense on our part to take action on this ordinance here tonight in order so we can better understand what's going to happen in the future when it comes along, so. Council, your wishes or your questions?
The biggest problem that I have with this is I feel like our arms are being twisted on this timeline. We don't have time to research and see for ourselves what the heck is going on here. Where I am as far as medical marijuana is, I'm undecided at this point. And I would like to have an opportunity to see more, but now we have this deadline of September ninth. And I just have a real problem with that. But I know that that's not our issue to deal with.
No choice in that matter.
Yeah.
You're saying, Rhonda, regulations could change down the road, whereas that they're saying this is strictly for medical purposes.
This is strictly medical.
Right. But...
Recreational use is still illegal.
I'm sorry?
Recreational use is still illegal.
Right, okay. But before, when this is all settled, do you think that recreational use will somehow form a loophole in there? That they can use it for recreational and medical?
I think that was the purpose for the legislature to act on the medical marijuana, so that didn't occur. Whether that happens, I can't. I don't have a crystal ball to tell you that. But, you know, somewhere down the road, they may request to put that on the ballot again. I don't know. But what I can tell you is that the regulations for determining, the rules for establishing who is a medical marijuana user, and the regulations for determining that person or patient, and the rules for the retail dispensing and cultivation are still under development.
Well, I guess, I guess that's what concerns me. I, again, I am not opposed at all of medical use. If it's gonna benefit somebody's life or something like that, I'm in favor of it. But there's too many things that go on in our, not so much in our government, but our society, whereas that they always find a loophole. Always find a loophole. I don't care if it's EBD or EBT cards or anything like that. They sell them, they get drugs off of the money, the whole nine yards. You know, these people that want to use it for recreational purposes are gonna find a way. And right now, I think it's, it's out of control. Because it starts there and it ends. We keep talking about heroin or anything like that. It does not stop with marijuana.
And really, what I'm trying to explain to you at this point is, I don't want somebody to come and say, "I want to open up a business in your new industrial park for cultivation," when we don't even know what the requirements for cultivation are and who's going to be regulated or allowed to do that. At some point, when the state determines what those regulations are, we can take a second look at this.
And I agree with that. But the other issue, like we mentioned earlier, is who is going to qualify for this use? Yeah.
We don't...
And that's a big, big issue.
The bill lists several, several medical diagnoses that they have, but there still are a lot of regulations that need to be put in place as to how most people are going to be given, I'll say for lack of better words, a prescription.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
I think Mr. Reinhardt's opinion is well taken. And I know everybody has an opinion on it. And I think at this time, we need to hear some more opinions. I don't know if we should, at our point, jump into this without, you know, at least having more readings.
So you're making that in form of a motion?
I'll move that we have a first reading.
I'll second that.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. I'm sorry. Did anybody else have any comments or questions?
No, we're okay. Thank you.
All righty. Okay. Number seven is also a resolution. So Lori, would you please number and read?
Resolution number twenty-four, 2016. A resolution to establish a volunteer peace officers dependence fund board, RC Chapter 143.
And Rhonda, I think you want to speak on this?
Let me ask you.
Oh, Mary's?
This is a volunteer police, peace officers dependent fund, very similar that we have for the fire department. And the board will consist of five members. Two members shall be elected by this city council. Two members shall be elected by the volunteer peace officers of the police department. And the fifth member shall be an elector of the city other than a public employee, member of a legislative authority, or peace officer of the police department, elected by the other four. So once we get this established, we'll get two from the council, two from the volunteer, and then those four will get together and name the fifth. And it's, each member shall serve for one year, commencing the first day of January. And I think Rhonda mentioned also, there's a fee that goes with that. Will be charged so much. I don't know what that is.
It's based on property.
Based on property valuation. But I don't know what that will be. But we're required to have this, just as we do... Bruce, any more on that?
From the fireside, we pay one fifty, and we give an assessment twice a year. We get assessed whenever the fund balance drops below a certain amount. And they send out an assessment throughout the state. And have Rhonda and Lori test to see if it's based on property valuation for the city. So every year, I have to have Lori fill out that form stating what the property valuation is for the city, and that determines what our assessment is. I don't know what fee schedule they've set up for the...
I believe it's similar.
Said similar.
It could be exactly the same.
You also point every year this... And we hope we don't have to use this. It's if you have a depth of either a policeman or fireman on duty, that you get into this. So that's the resolution to establish the volunteer peace officers dependent fund.
Then you really don't have much choice in matter.
Yeah. I move we suspend.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I move that we adopt.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Number eight is also a resolution. So Lori, would you please number and read?
Resolution number twenty-five, 2016. A resolution stating the services that the city will provide to the proposed annexation of Lot 1 through Lot 4, located in Stark's Outlots. Lot 1, also known as parcel number 06321002021.000. Lot 2, also known as parcel number 06321002022.000. Lot 3, also known as parcel number 06321002023.000. And Lot 4, also known as parcel number 06321002024.000.
Rhonda, did you want to make some comments on that?
Sure. I'm actually going to talk about number eight and number nine together. What we have received is there has been a request from three different property owners to annex into the City of Bryan. One of the requests is a property owner off of Buffalo Road. The other two, this is the combined resolution that you have before you, are two property owners that are down Evansport Road. And so all three of these have basically combined their efforts to annex at one time and have filed one petition with the county commissioners. I believe they have a hearing scheduled for September the seventh to approve or deny that annexation process. As part of the annexation process, the city is required to provide with that petition a resolution of services, which are those services, utilities, road clearing, such maintenance that we are going to provide to those properties should we accept the properties into the city.
Are utilities being provided now?
To the property that is located on Buffalo Road, some utilities are being provided. They had made a request due to a problem at that property and under emergency circumstances, the, I believe sewer or water, one was extended to that property, but with the proviso that they would annex into the city. And so they are coming forward to do that.
No issues on the part of zoning or anything like that, Andrew? Whatsoever? It's residential, is that what these are? Residential business?
Well, this is just the services, right and left, okay.
Well, we will have to accept the annexation if you so choose, once the county approves it, but they are all residential at this point. I believe they'll probably zone our one, but that will be determined.
All righty. Okay. Council?
I make a motion to suspend the rules on resolution twenty-five.
I'll second.
Are we working on both of them?
Should we do both? We can't do both of them.
You can just do the second one. You'll just have...
Okay.
Okay.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move to adopt resolution twenty-five?
Are we waiting for them? No, I didn't. Oh, okay, I didn't hear. I was waiting for a motion to pass.
Okay. You suspend it. And we voted that. Now I move to adopt the first resolution, not twenty-five.
Okay. Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move to suspend resolution twenty-six?
Do you want me to read it first?
Do we need... Our invader got to play head on that.
Yes, would you please number and read?
Resolution number twenty-six, 2016. A resolution stating the services that the city will provide to the proposed annexation of property located in the north half of the southwest quarter of Section 18 in Palasca Township, known as parcel number 06318005007.000.
Without further discussion, I'll go with suspending.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Okay, next, we have the retirement of a volunteer firefighter, Chief Siders.
Good evening. Council's been presented a letter from Lieutenant Bradley Stuckey, who has made a determination that he's going to retire at the end of the month, effective August 27th. This is due to family requirements and requirements at his full-time job. Brad has served with the department for the past 25 years. Sad to see him go, but I wish him all the best. And I ask that council accept this resignation with regret.
I move we accept the resignation with regret, and a big thank you.
I'll second that.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have hiring a seasonal part-time employee Recreation Department, Mr. Dominick.
Good evening. I will be losing one of my seasonal mowers at the end of the month due to the new rules as far as healthcare goes and that kind of stuff. So I need to hire somebody to replace him to help us through the rest of the fall, and then hopefully to get us going again when we start next spring. So I'm asking you to hire Daniel Lehman to help us mow in the parks for the rest of the seasonal process.
How does that work then? Well, he, you're saying you lost the one, and then what happens next spring? Who, of those two, who would you bring back to...
Oh, the one that I'm losing won't come back.
Oh, I see.
Because he's a retired public employee, so for their insurance, if they work, they kind of...
Oh, I didn't realize that. I thought it was maybe too many hours he'd put in or something. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so then it costs them more money to buy the connector than it is to work, so...
I didn't realize that was the situation.
Yep, I'll be right, I'll be right where I need to be. If Dan comes back, we'll be right where we need to be next spring when we start up again.
Council?
I'll move that we accept.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is Chief Wallace for the hiring of a patrol. Please, for the police department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to ask council to approve a conditional offer of employment to John Rathke as a full-time patrol officer with the Bryan Police Department, pending that he passes his psychological and medical examination, which is scheduled for later this week. He will fill one of the open positions within the patrol division. His start date will be determined once we receive the psychological and physical examination and that it is completed and passed. Mr. Rathke has successfully completed a background check for the employment. Mr. Rathke has successfully completed a background check for the employment. He is currently part-time with the Eden Police Department, and he does have an associate's degree in criminal justice. Once he is hired, then he will go into a twelve-week training program with the department and be on a one-year probation period.
I'll move to accept.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, let's see here. Next, we have permission to hire in the city clerk's office. Lori?
I am requesting that council hire Lisa Mormon as an account clerk, too, in the clerk treasurer's office, with primary duties to include income tax and customer service. We have offered a conditional offer of employment pending a physical and background check. She has a solid background in income tax and accounting with a degree from Defiance College. If you so choose to hire, she would serve a one-year probation period. Her hire date at this point is planned to be effective September sixth, two thousand sixteen.
I move we accept this request?
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resignation of a police officer, and so Chief Wallace again?
Counsel, you should have a letter in front of you from Officer Matt Arnold. This is a resignation letter for the purpose of retirement. This will be effective August thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Officer Arnold has been with the department for thirty-three years, and he has done an outstanding job with our community relations program. So, at this time, I'd like to ask counsel to accept his resignation for the purpose of retirement.
I move that we accept his retirement with regret and thank you for his years of service.
Second. Rick?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay. I think that is all we have on the agenda, so I'll go around the room, but after that, we'll take a short recess, and we will go into executive session for acquisition of property. So, Andrew, you have anything else?
Sure.
Chief Wallace, Leroy, Chief Siders, Mr. Dominic, Mr. Sproul. Okay. Judy?
No, just regret on, it sounds like we're losing two really good men here, Brad for twenty-five years and Matt for thirty-three. That's a lot of years to give to the City of Brian, and I thank them for that.
Ms. Carrie?
I would like to echo that. Thank you for your years of dedication to the city, Brad and Matt, and you will be missed.
Good.
I just want to say that I attended a cultural activity yesterday at the A&E building of the Brian City Orchestra, which is fantastic. We had a nice number there to hear it, but I just think our, just one more flower in the hat of our, of our fine city, of what we have with all this talent, and that the fine people share it, and I just wanted to let people know that. Also, I'd like to also remind property owners to, please, please, clean up your properties. We have, it's such a bad thing on, on the other, it's a big, it's a big sore to the other property owners around if your properties aren't up to what they should be. And I'll stop there.
Okay. Lori?
No, sir.
Rhonda?
I just want to wish Matt Arnold well. Worked with him for many years and always had a good working relationship with him. Good luck, Matt.
Okay. Mayor?
I too want to wish Brad and Matt the best as they move on. They've served the city well, and they're going to be missed. A big hole to fill along that line. A couple of things, due to Labor Day holiday on September fifth, the first council meeting of September will be held seven o'clock on Tuesday, September sixth, and trash will be picked up as usual. I'll get to the trash pickup here. Labor Day, Monday, September fifth, city offices will be closed, and garbage will be picked up as usual, and the council will meet on Tuesday, September sixth, at seven o'clock PM. Also, Rhonda gave me information of a webinar that's going to be presented Thursday, September fifteenth, at six o'clock PM. It will be set up back in my conference room, and it's creating municipal downtown redevelopment districts. So, it's House Bill two thirty-three, and it's information on how to, to set one of those, or what's coming, and what grants are available, and you'll probably be hearing more about municipal downtown redevelopments and so forth with this type of thing that's coming about with House Bill two thirty-three. Also, a reminder, September twenty-seventh, and you've all received information, if you haven't gotten that back yet, the prayer breakfast, that's at the Methodist Church. You should have had the letter sent, and they send back your reservations if you're going to go. I'm not able to attend that, so either Tommy or Keith would give my proclamation for that particular day. So, I think other than that, nine eleven is a tentative date, is the date for the school open house. So, open house and dedication on nine eleven. We'll get more information probably the next time on that. So, everything's moving forward on that issue, so other than that, that's all I have tonight.
Okay. A couple of comments I have, again, is just to Brad and Matt with the fire and police department, again, just two very dedicated individuals to this city, and again, people in the public says, "Well, this guy retired, that guy retired," but again, it's their service and dedication, and a lot of people just don't realize what they do for this city. So, we are surely going to miss those two. The other thing I have here is that, just tonight, I was handed this, and the mayor and I attended this last year, and it's the POW MIA remembrance ceremony, and it's going to be-
I was there, too.
Sorry, Keith. And September the eighteenth at the Veterans Memorial Building in Mount Peoria, and that's at four o'clock, and it was a very good program, and, boy, you know, I was in that situation in Vietnam, and we just can't forget the people that are still there that have never came home. So, again, I think it'd be worthwhile if anybody could take a couple of minutes and attend this ceremony at the Veterans Memorial Building in Mount Peoria on September the eighteenth. So, with that, I think that's, that's all I have. So, we're going to take a short recess, and then we will go into executive session. Thank you.